Yeah, what meeting for the?
Yes, give me a minute, Mayor.
Couldn't you have a word of prayer?
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads this evening as councilors, administration, and also residents of Carson. We ask thy Spirit and guidance to be with us. The decisions we make will be for the best of the community, that we will be stewards of the taxes and spend them in appropriate ways which are beneficial to our community. May we make this community a safe and happy place to live with all our residents enjoying the safe and the amenities that we provide. In these things, we ask for it humbly in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, councillor. All right, today is the fourth day of June and we have the committee of the whole meeting. I am replacing councillor Brown for about fifteen to twenty minutes and I will give her the chair at this point. We recognize the media, Corrie MacAlsey for Channel Thirty-Two, thank you for being there. And we recognize Smith in the gallery, thank you very much, you're going to be our delegation. We have the agenda presented to you. Do you feel it needs any additions?
You need to know the questions before the questions item?
It would help if you'd give me a sense of what it is.
Okay, garbage dumpster at emergency services.
Okay, so councillor Selk, you will fill us in?
I will.
Thank you. All right, and we need a motion with...
I'll make that motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay. We have a motion. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, at this point, we have a delegation. We have Mrs. Janice Smith and her husband who would like to come and do a presentation and Jesse Doctor Low for the Rotary. Please come in and join us here. So, Janice, if you want to help us, it's regarding a land use issue and that has involved Mrs. Smith lately and she has some concern she wants to bring to council. Thank you so much for taking your time to come and present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Janice Smith and I live at four sixty, Third Avenue East. And this is in reference to Jody's dance studio being placed in a residential one zone, which at this point went to appeal and we've not heard back from the committee on the appeal yet. As the municipal planning commission were making their decision, they clearly had bylaws that were not followed. On preparation for our appeal, we found several bylaws that were ignored. They're in the handouts that we did give you. The MPC made the decision to grant the dance studio using the terms discretionary use. The handout states what comes under discretionary use and which does not have a dance studio listed under discretionary use. Bylaw number one six four seven C states in part two, home occupation, two, item A, quote, "That there are no more than six business-related trips to the residence per day." With the approval of the studio, that bylaw is changed from six up to possibly a hundred and ten per day of vehicles that will be coming. So, the bylaw states six and this goes up to a hundred and ten, which to me is a great growth stretch under the discretionary use as laid out in your bylaws. Under schedule eight, number three, general standards, it states that in part that the development authority has to ensure that the amenities of the neighborhood are not negatively affected and that the principal character of the neighborhood is upheld. In sixteen B, it states that in part that they have to make sure that they think the building would not materially interfere or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of the neighboring properties. I feel that when the MPC is making a decision which is in an obidy, changes residential one to business-commercial zoning, there should be consultation with the town council before a decision is made. We felt like the decision was made very quickly. Several people that were on that committee did not understand bylaws or did not have a knowledge of the bylaws. And so, we felt like when you're making a decision of six to a hundred and odd, then that should have come back to council to be discussed because that's a huge difference in the bylaw, which the bylaw states.
Can I just ask you a question at this point, Janice? How do you come to the hundred and ten? Is because you're thinking ten vehicle every so many hours or...
It was granted ten students per class.
Right.
She listed in her, on her site, the classes that she would be having. And if you go to that with the amount of classes from, she has a class in the morning and then she goes, she has two classes in the morning and then she has classes from three thirty to eight o'clock, going every forty-five minutes. So, it adds up to, up to twenty vehicles coming and going at the exact same time because she does not have a gap between classes. So, when we added it up, it came to that amount if she has a full class of ten.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Which she was granted.
Thank you for clarifying it.
Thank you. Anyway, we feel that there should have been a consultation with the town to make that big of a decision. It doesn't appear that there are any boundaries on discretionary use. In this situation, it was misinterpreted and misused if you look at the bylaws which we've given you all in your handouts, the bylaws that we used when we went to appeal. It's all in there. I feel that discretionary use should have a clear definition as to what is allowed and that bylaws be followed so as a similar situation might be avoided. If discretionary use has no clear boundaries, then there is no need for zoning. If you don't have a discretion on whether this is an R-one or a commercial or whichever, then there's no need for zoning. In closing, I would just like to, this is what I would like to see, I would like to see training given to the MPC board members so that they would have a better knowledge of the bylaws. Some of them are making decisions and not, having no knowledge of the bylaws and going by what was told to them. And of course, several of the bylaws were broken. And when we went to appeal, we were able to look through all the bylaws and find out which ones applied to the appeal that we had and those that were presented, which you have in your handout there. I'd like to see a clear definition of discretionary use as it applies to the bylaws. As it stands now, the definition is open to private interpretation. And I would also like to see improved communication between the MPC and the town council so that both parties are on the same page in making these kind of decisions which affect the beauty of our town and affect the people within the town. And it's a great town to be in and we love being in this little town of ours and that. We also love where we are and we picked that spot for a reason. And we had an opportunity to have looked at homes that were on near the school, but we didn't want to be where the busy area was and that. So, anyhow, that's my presentation and I'd like to thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Janice, thank you very much for that presentation. You referenced to some interesting documents and there is some interpretation there, no doubt. And does council have questions for Mrs. Smith regarding her concerns regarding those I appreciate you doing that presentation because when citizens come forward, it helps council sometime to review the bylaws and the comments you made may shed some new light for us to make better amendments if needed.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Justin, is it just you or do you have some people coming? James and Ben are supposed to be...
Okay, we're going to carry on then and we will stop, stop at the one that come, okay? All right, so let's go to five adoptions of minutes of May seventh, two thousand nineteen. I reviewed them and found them pretty complete.
I move to adopt the minutes, accept the minutes of the last committee of the whole May the seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, let's go to six. Bylaw sixteen forty-seven, land use bylaw, that is now the review relative to Mrs. Smith's delegation. And that is an interesting perspective here. What is discretionary use? There is no definition, it is true in our bylaw. Should there be, should there be a better alignment as to what constitute residential use and what constitute something as commercial use? And how do we define that? Is that the traffic that define that or is that simply the number of people coming by? I see councillor Brown and I'm going to give you the chair because that's the way it works.
Perfect.
We are discussing the delegation.
Perfect.
We just had the presentation, this one is not done yet. Okay, so we're discussing this.
Okay. So, go ahead, councillor Bengri.
Madam Chairman, as I read over the home occupation excerpts that we got, under general standards, I outlined, I highlighted eight, nine, twelve, and sixteen B, which I find very interesting read.
Can you read them?
Concerning this, item eight, home occupations shall not generate vehicular traffic or parking in excess of that which is characteristic of the district within which it is located. We are generating far more traffic with this, with this home unit than what that, that is assessed for.
Mm-hmm.
Item nine, the development authority may regulate any aspect of the home occupation, including two, but not limited to the number and size of vehicles associated with the use, type and extent of screening of outdoor storage, hours of operation, or any other dimension of the use to ensure the amenities of the neighborhood are not negatively affected and the principal residential, residential character of the neighborhood is upheld. How's that going to be done? How is the characteristics of that neighborhood going to be upheld with them changing that whole aspect of that corner property?
Right.
Number twelve, traffic shall be controlled by and conformed to the Town and Carson Traffic Safety Bylaw.
Disregard my own.
That's putting quite a dire situation on our peace officer to be up there twenty-four seven, watching the traffic, make sure that the noise and the vibration, no offensive noise. And item thirteen, no offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, heat, or glare discernible beyond the property lines shall be produced by the use. Hallelujah. And sixteen B, any use that would, in the opinion of the development authority, materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties. I, I, I'm just concerned.
All right.
So, you make, so you feel that these, all of the things that you have highlighted and brought up, that they are maybe...
Negatively affecting.
Right. They're a little different than how it was, how it is progressing, maybe?
I strongly feel that way.
Okay, anybody else? Mayor?
I really think for, for us to really look at this properly, there is an appeal process that is in the making. I don't know when that's going to be.
The appeal is done. Just waiting to hear from the appeal.
So, we have not received the recommendation.
Week, I think it was fourteen days, does that sound right? So, we got a week now, a week tonight? Yeah, it should be within the next week.
So, I think council would be well advised, once we have the recommendation from that appeal board, whichever direction it is, to really review those bylaws and make sure first of all that they're consistent with each other in order for the MPC to have a document that is more robust.
Councillor Court.
I would agree with that. I'm on the MPC, it's the one meeting they had in five months and I was in St. George, so I missed the whole thing.
It's your fault.
And I understand that there was some discussion on what they could to alleviate some of the concerns, parking spots, et cetera, et cetera. Perhaps the better discussion for this one, after they get the results of the appeal, is what exactly is the role of the MPC?
Correct.
We might need to look at that. If, if the discretionary part of the MPC is taken away, and again, I wasn't there, so I can't speak to why they came up with this decision, why they, whatever it might be. But if the discretionary part of the MPC is taken away, then I'm starting to question why we would need an MPC.
Correct.
And council will just make the decisions.
Correct. Councillor Bengri.
To Jeff, with the appeal, gone through the appeal process, where do we stand if there's some issues?
Your appeal was based on the bylaw that you currently have, right? So, you're not in a position to amend the bylaw to affect the appeal?
No.
Right?
Have to look at it after.
So, I agree with what Sting said, let's, let's see what the results of the appeal look like. And then you need to have a serious discussion about the level of discretion you want to allow within the bylaw. And you can still potentially allow discretion, but there might be some specific areas that need tightening. And there may just need to be, yeah, we just may need to look at some specific areas. But I don't know what that appeal is going to look like yet and nobody in this room does.
Can I ask you a question? When was the last time that one was appealed and it was brought to council? Like, this is my first one.
Right, so generally, this wouldn't be, so...
Right.
Hold on, let me, let me get my words right. This is not an appeal of the appeal to council.
No, no. Correct.
Yeah.
If the neighborhood don't like what comes back from the appeal, it's done. You are not the next stage.
No, no. We don't overturn it.
No, you don't.
Okay.
So, that's why it'll be interesting to see what, what comes of this because you are there to set the original rule and then, it wasn't you guys specifically, but at some point, discretion was given to a third party to interpret and to evaluate the rule.
Mayor?
There is something that was made reference to better training for people on the MPC board. I find it interesting that the province has now decided that people who are on the appeal board need to receive rigorous training. So, I think it begs the question, why is there no training from the province for municipalities and people who sit on those boards?
I think there probably is some and the other issue with that, Mayor, is everybody's land use bylaw is different.
Yeah, exactly.
Everybody has a different rule. So, you know, we have Old Man River at all the meetings to help guide there. We have staff there. We have councillors there. So, but there's always unique circumstances. It's obviously as long as...
Yeah, it kind of makes sense, you're right.
Councillor Bengri.
And Jeff, let's make adamantly sure that we all know that the appeal board is not the same as the...
No, it's a provincial.
Right.
No, they were not, nobody from our community was on the appeal board.
Right.
Well, I should, from our town because there was a county member on the appeal.
Right.
Councillor Court.
Yes, just kind of in defense of the MPC and I understand where Mr. Smith is coming from, they presented it very well. The MPC is dealing with, because of our town and it's not a new town, we're dealing with variances all the time, dealing with wheelchair ramps, additions to whatever it might be. So, there's a lot of things that go on with the MPC. This is obviously a more complicated one than, than most of what they're dealing with. So, they do deal with a lot of different variances.
Okay.
And I really think Mr. Carter does his homework best as he can on this.
Of course. Awesome. Any other, any other questions?
So, councillor Brown, by the way, do we want to put this back on the agenda once we have the appeal?
I agree. Definitely.
And have some discussion relative to how they came back because I'm sure we'll have some relatively thorough rationale for appeal board decisions and we can compare that against the bylaws, is that acceptable?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Can you take questions from the gallery?
We would love to take questions from the gallery. If you could just stand for us, please.
I guess one comment, as we've kind of canvassed the neighborhood and checked with the neighbors to see how they felt about the effect it had on the community. We had fifteen signatures of neighbors that were concerned and basically objected. There were several community members that had concerns but didn't want to go public so they didn't sign. Those signatures are in the handout.
But at the MPC, you were given the opportunity to stand up and speak and give your pitch, essentially, on why you agreed or disagreed, right?
Well, there were two individuals that stood.
Correct.
And expressed, and then we were kind of told that if we didn't have any other concerns, that we didn't want to call on the meeting.
Okay.
But I would have liked to have them stand, have them raise their hands to the ones that agreed with the concerns that were up there. Because it appeared like there was only two of us. There were a few members, but there were others that would have liked to have spoken but didn't because their concerns didn't go beyond what we...
So, their concerns weren't met at that MPC meeting, is what you're saying?
No, no.
No. Concerns were duplicated.
Repetitious.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
So, you felt like they needed time to speak towards it?
Either that or at least in a show of hands of how many had concerns and objected.
Okay.
And that, that didn't count.
Okay.
You know, in regards to that.
Well...
Thank you.
Mayor?
Just, I was present. So, the way I looked at that issue, when somebody else stood up, it was not so much that they were not allowed to talk, it's that the meeting is conducted in a way as to new evidence being presented. If it was the same evidences which the chair at that time asked, "Do you have anything different to add to the comments that were made?" And he said, "No." He said, "Well, then we have all those concerns in our pocket." So, that's the way I interpreted it.
And I understand.
I didn't interpret it as they was not allowed to talk, it's just it would not have brought any new evidence to make a decision.
Yes, and I understand how Dave Miller caught up.
Yes.
He, and he was kind of told, you know, if you don't have anything else, don't walk.
Yeah, if it's...
He was a little disappointed.
Right.
That he had a chance to speak. But my concern was that with the, with the large group that were here, they were not asked whether they objected or not. And so, there was not a sign of how many supported the objections.
You know, from, yeah.
One question I could have asked that and...
From, from what I took from it, is that all the people that were there were in support of your position. That's the way I looked at it.
Agreed.
And...
It appeared that way.
It appeared that way, but I guess I didn't interpret that well.
Okay.
I mean, I would like to see, a show of hands to show how many did support, but if...
But those are, those are interesting comments. We can improve the way we do business. Thank you.
And that's the reason why we kind of canvassed the neighborhood, to see how many objected and were concerned. We got a good showing of fifteen people, you know, when, I guess, an objection, one person that wanted to build their dreams. And to me, the dreams of having a peaceful neighborhood, these other fifteen people...
Was important.
...were ignored when they went ahead and approved.
Okay.
Well, perfect. Thank you. We'll just have your wife, just one minute.
Okay. Oh, one thing I would like to mention of, which didn't happen and it was a little bit confusing to us, we all received the letters about that she had asked to have that done. We thought it was just a meeting to discuss. There was nothing in the letter stating that we needed bylaws to, we couldn't just say, "Oh, we don't want it there, we don't like it." We thought of bylaws, but nobody knew that. We didn't have a clue, there was nothing, it was a very small, few lines, it was very big. And so, we didn't come prepared because we didn't know about that was one of the decisions we made.
Part of it.
And we had no idea that we were supposed to have bylaws, which we have on the handouts that we gave you.
Correct.
There were several bylaws that were not...
Adhered to, maybe?
Adhered to, yes.
Okay.
There were several. So, we were ready on the second one. So, we had a chance to go through the bylaws on the second meeting of the appeal.
Right, right.
And find the one that, hey, you, you need to do this, give us several of them, not just one bylaw, there's several.
Okay.
And so, it would probably be appreciative to many people who maybe are in the same position to have that in the letter, that they need to come prepared with bylaws that go, you know, against maybe one decision, if, a bylaw that...
Perfect, that's good to know. Thank you. We sure appreciate, we appreciate you coming. Okay, we will move right along. We will go to Justin, Mr. Justin Low and the Rotarians.
Bring your chair and come sit up here.
It's a sit-in.
Thank you so much.
So, come on up, yeah, get comfortable.
Wow, do you need a drink?
I guess I can have some beer then.
Justin, I emailed you, I guess, just to see how you're talking about the game.
All right, go ahead.
Do you want me to actually intro this, if I could?
I would love it.
I don't know if they're coming with a prepared speech because I didn't really ask them to. What I wanted to do, I hope, tonight is really, we're in our committee meeting, it's a little less formal. I sent you a number of pros and cons and thoughts around different locations and the Rotarians and this group have preferences as well. So, I thought we can just have some discussion about what works and what doesn't in certain locations. Because what I would like to see us come out of here with is two things. One is, we're all kind of on the same page with the location so that we can move ahead and that's fairly set. And two is, we got it, we got to talk about a couple of hurdles, like the water system and I just forgot, oh, and just the finances of the whole thing. So, you had that further on your package, but I just wanted to start having some discussion about location. So, in your package, I put in four locations with pictures and, and we met, actually, it wasn't Ben, it was Skyler a couple of months ago, but we met and just talked about, where is this going to work in? And I'll give Justin full marks, he's at a point where he's like, "Just put it wherever you're okay to put it." He's not pushing back that hard anymore. And so, he's being real sport.
Okay.
But there are definite pros and cons to different locations. I want us to go through a bit tonight.
Perfect. Councillor Bengri.
As I went over this, Jeff, I noticed one location that I would like to see utilized and that's the hillside, right beside Brooks, out on that hill. Because there was residences down there, so there's services there in the, in the water. It's very flat, we could bring...
Is that in the corner, Fifth Street and West Creek Drive?
Yes.
I see. Okay.
Okay, so there is services there, there in the, into those properties at one time. And it's a, it's a open, open field.
Is that town on land?
Yes, it is.
So, should we...
I'd buy Peter Haig's house.
Yeah.
I think we should just start with the first one. Let's just start with the Sunset Park and let's just work our way through them. I think that's the best way to look at this.
So, when we've talked about Sunset Park, I guess, one of the, I don't want to call it disadvantage, but we know we'll have what we call the NIMBY factor, the not in my backyard factor, right? As much as it's a spray park and it's seasonal, you're going to have a whole bunch of people there that just lose their minds about this thing being in the city, you know?
Correct.
Which we can or cannot entertain.
Correct.
That's up to you guys. But the other part of this is, it doesn't have designated parking, so everything would have to be parallel parking, which on most days is okay. And it's not really central. So, if I'm a little kid on the east hill and I want to go to the spray park, I'm a ways away.
Right.
And I'm down and up a big hill for it too, right? So, there's some central things, but it has a sewer line within the property and it has water adjacent on both Fifth and Seventh. And Fifth Street asphalt doesn't tear me up terribly to dig up. It's not in great shape.
Councillor Bengri.
One thing about a spray park, regardless of where you put it, the kids are going to find it and they're going to be there.
They will, they will. The question is, do we feel any kind of obligation to keep it somewhat central? And I don't know if we do, but we got a councillor that lives on the east hill and feels that sometimes the east hill gets overlooked a little bit.
That's right. You're looking for items for our planning session, I'm going to talk about urban renewal as one of them.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, that's why the Lions Park was the one that was initially discussed. The problem with the Lions Park is the utility, the sheer cost of the utility extension is really getting prohibited there. We can discuss that a little more.
Okay, go ahead.
I just say one thing, as we're talking about all these locations and the finances come into it, one of the big things is, is there a bathroom there? So, so if we build at a place where there's an existing bathroom, then you save the money of building a bathroom. If you don't, then we have to build a bathroom. If you don't, then we have to build a bathroom. When we planned originally, we had proposed Town Square and Lions Park, which had bathrooms. So our original budget included the spray park with a recirculation system with the bathroom already there. So if we build in a spot where we need to build a bathroom, that adds on to it, and we can talk about the water, and if we can substitute the bathroom cost and not do a recirculation system vice versa. That all just overhangs all of this.
Okay.
Yeah. So, all of, except for Lions Park, the other three locations would require washing.
Bathrooms.
And so, that comes at a considerable cost. Particularly, if we have to down the price tag.
Mayor, go ahead.
Personally, I think regardless of which option we are looking at, I really feel because of the huge amount of water that's going to be used, regardless that it is from the original figures that you were given, or that it is from the revised, which is one-third down from what was given originally, because council, for the past seven years, have tried to become conscious of the value of the commodity of water, and of stressing to customer that a liter of water is worth something, every consumption is worth something, there's no more freebies it was in the past. I really feel that it would be counter, counter to the culture of the past, to council and this one, to go back into a use of water that is drained into a sewer line. And so, my point of view, it is, in my opinion, imperative that there be a recycling system. There is an extra cost for a bathroom, another twenty-five thousand or so. I understand that. But I honestly believe, if we do not look at the recycling, I think we would be under scrutiny from the public to say, "You're charging us for more for the water, we can, we no longer have freebies, and now you're telling us it's okay to waste water." And that, to me, from the public eye, it's a problem.
Right.
So therefore, I think recycling makes sense, a bathroom makes sense, both make sense. But I wouldn't take one instead of the other.
Counselor Salk.
Hey, I just need to clarify what the mayor is talking about. You can't recycle water at the Lions Park?
The project costing that the Rotary gave us does not include recycling.
At any park?
It includes...
At any, yeah.
At any park?
No.
I just want to make sure that we're...
It includes the bathroom.
Like, okay, because we can recycle water at the Lions Park or any...
Recirculation is not location-specific.
No, it's, it's not. It's just...
It's not anywhere.
It's just to have it.
Go ahead.
So you know how that evolved. Our initial presentation to you with the cost included the spray park with the recirculation system.
Correct.
When we went to Parks and Rec about location, and they started recommending some of these other locations that did not have a bathroom, then we reworked it, saying, "Well, we could, under the same budget, do the spray park with a bathroom without a recirculation system." So that's how we reworked that. But now, I totally understand what you're saying. I agree. So, then, when we do recirculation, if we're going to build it where there's not a bathroom, then we have to add fifty thousand on to the total price, which might be hard for us as Rotarians to come up with in the timeframe that we have at CFIP. We, we're doing the, basically, we have three-quarters of our funding, and, and the next part of our funding really depends when we get details solidified, and then we've got major donors lined up and stuff, so...
You're really only, you only really have one location, then? Lions Park?
Unless we can raise enough money to, to build a...
Yep.
The other thing, too, even at Lions Park, we still have to build somewhere to house all of the circulation system. There's still partially a building that has to be either retrofitted or built.
Well, you'd have to do that in any of the spots.
Correct.
Counselor Salk.
It's a, it's a twelve-by-sixteen-foot shed building that you need for a recirculation system, and only an eight-by-ten that you need to, if it's not a recirculation system.
Counselor?
Okay, I'm just going to cut to the chase.
Go ahead.
I think we can decide on this pretty simply, and that's, I don't like any of the locations except the Lions Park, and you can ask any of the other counselors how they feel, for the simple fact that it's central, there's a playground next to it, it fits in with current usage of the area, and we're not trying to make a stretch there. Plus, if we could take that camp kitchen and fire it into the sun, that would make me a happy man. And I'm sure it would, all of the bylaw officers in our CMP in this town, where they have people living there.
And Strain's not here. Well, that's...
Agreed.
Yeah. We have looked, Counselor, oh, sorry, go ahead.
The only comment I had was, with regards to the amount, if we were not having the recirculation, wouldn't that come back to infringe on the amount of water we're allowed to take out of the river system with the province? I mean, we're limited to how much we can take anyway, right?
Well, within our licenses.
So, but I, I, I have to agree with Counselor Salk. I've always thought the Lions Park was the location.
We always did.
Go ahead.
So, between us, we have a bit of debate about the annual total consumption on a dump system, but it's somewhere between, on the low end, two million up to six million gallons a year, if you just dump it. So it's a fraction of a recirc, because you're just topping up the evaporation laws, right? So, it's not a licensing issue for us.
No.
But where I do have, and I, I think it's a mild concern, we do not have issues at our water plant treating the annual quantity that's required, but we do have some issues treating peak demand water.
Right.
So, hot day, August afternoon, four P.M., six P.M., everybody wants to come home, turn on the sprinklers, have a shower, make dinner. We struggle to keep up production at peak times with our plant.
Right.
Now, but on an annual basis, we're fine. This would also compound demand at peak times.
Right.
It's the nature of the facility. That's fine. It just is what it is. So, depending, again, we have, we have quite a variance in the amount of annual consumption, but I mean, six million gallons a year, if it's on the high end, is a tremendous amount of water, that we would have to treat in a two-month, three-month period. Even if it's two million gallons, still our water. For, just for context, our reservoir, our water reservoir is thirty million gallons.
Okay.
So just, just to give you context of how much that is at any given time, right?
Counselor Bengry.
Counsel, I've been an ex-president of Lions Club, when that building was built, and I've also been an ex-president of the Rotary Club. I have some real motions in my mind, going through my mind, that we take out a camp kitchen, which is designated in Alliance Park. Now, one of your, one of your sites is the Rotary Park, which is down on the administration, government administration. How does that fit, Jeff? Do we have water and stuff down there?
So, we do. One of my biggest, well, there's a couple of logistical concerns with that site, but they could all be overcome. Everything with time and money. So, one of the issues we have there, just the topography, it's a bit of a hole, and the sewer line, which is to the southeast of the park, actually might be at a higher elevation than the ground level of the park, which would now require a lift station.
Lift station.
Which we don't want. If we raise the ground, so we bring in tons and tons of earth, we have storm mad holes in the park that now have to be lifted, which is doable, but it just costs, right? The other thing, and it's just because it happens too often, is guess where the water line is? It's right underneath brand-new asphalt, current veteran sidewalk in Fifth.
No, no.
Always is.
Always is. But that's where it is. And so, it just, it has to be considered, right? Is, can you cut through it? You bet.
Okay, so, if I could, Mr. Low, if I could just ask you a question? So I'm just looking at the map of, that we were given of Lions Park. So ideally, in your perfect world, where would you like it there?
It fits perfectly where the camp kitchen is. We, we tried to map it out in other areas, like around the camp kitchen, and it just doesn't work.
Okay.
That's like the ideal location.
Hard enough to walk, ball diamonds, baseball diamonds.
That, that batting pitch area, right beside the ball dug.
By the road.
You're way out. And I don't know if you see...
Too close to the road.
The design of it is more kind of a, like a circular triangular thing, and that's just kind of the long...
But we couldn't cut out into that ball dug right there.
One of the challenges of Lions Park, though, and it would be, it's a little different with a recirc system. So I think I had, there isn't any water in proximity, and I know you're all thinking, "Wait, there's a washroom there?" And there is. There's a tiny little line that runs from somewhere, I don't know, and it has to go into a pressure tank in that washroom to have enough pressure to flush the toilet. So we're certainly not supplying a water park with it, splash park. So we would have to go all the way out to Fourth Avenue in front of the pool to get water. So the utility extension of Lions Park, I think we put at twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Now, if it's not a dump system, if it's a recirc system, we could probably knock ass, Brandon. It takes the price of the piping down from a three-inch to a one-inch, like by fifty percent. And so, it'd probably be around sixteen, seventeen thousand to extend from Fourth Avenue with a one-inch line. And again, I never did ask Justin what the requirement line is for, for a recirc system, but I simply assumed it was...
I think it's the same.
Oh, really?
I, I don't know for sure.
That would just surprise me a bit, because with the recirc system, it has a tank that stays full, that tops up all the time, and you just have to fill that tank throughout, as it goes along.
Right.
Because actually, for a dump system, it requires a three and preferably a four-inch water rate. That's the size of our water mains in the avenues. Like, it's a huge volume of water.
I do have a concern also, where would our football teams get changed if you take the camp kitchen out of there? Just a question.
I'd always left that to the division to build change rooms for their program, but that's just me.
Counselor Barnes.
Yeah. Did we ever consider that the old tennis court there beside the pool as a location for that? Was there an issue with that?
Uh, it was, it's just...
Pretty close to the water there.
Yeah, it's exposed out there. It's just sitting out there, we're worried about a little dust and dirt and parking. There's a few things. We have a bit of discussion about that. We still, you still need to build a pump house and everything. One of the main concerns in talking to Randy was the bathroom, because there, you either go across to the park one, or you go into the swimming pool one, and people will be tracking dirt and mud and everything else, too. So, there was just a question about the bathroom in that location, and where would they go to use it? Because you'll have...
Right.
Non-paying customers are using the spray park, trying to go into the swimming pool and...
Correct.
Going to take a dip at the pool, too, at the same time.
We were looking at that location quite a lot when we wondered if we could tie into the same filtration system.
But it's not doing, no.
This, this actually would move and recirculate more water than the pool.
Than the pool, yep.
Like, it's just a, this is a, at full capacity, six hundred gallons a minute.
Wow. Wow.
That particular piece, too, Counselor, may end up in our overall Parks and Rec plan this fall.
Master plan.
Yeah, it's, there's a number of things. It's being used for parking quite a bit right now at baseball games and different events than the Lions Park.
I guess...
Go ahead. Counselor.
Is, is there, is there another location where we could move the camp kitchen or build another camp kitchen there?
So we talked about, if you just go, let me get my directions, if you're to go straight north, so just to the other side of the score, score booth there.
Oh, yeah.
Potentially, but we also have a, you know, there, there's costs. This is what, we got to come down these brass tacks, too. The town has committed an amount of money...
Ninety thousand dollars.
For this, and now we're looking at a twenty thousand dollar utility extension, a new pad for the camp kitchen, a moving the camp kitchen. You know, we're now at another thirty, forty thousand, you know, maybe thirty thousand dollars invested in this project. The question is whether council's prepared to eat that difference, or if you're going to put it back on the Rotarians to say, "Good luck, we'll raise it, you got a year."
Less than a year now, don't you?
We have to have it built and reported back to CFIP by July 2020.
July.
Got a year.
Counselor Bengry.
Jeff, is there any of these locations that has the supply of water that we need?
Yeah, I think they can all, on a recirc system, that, that almost comes out of the equation. It doesn't offend me at all. My one concern with supply on a dump system was Sunset Park, because Sunset Park is not on the pressure loop, the Seventh Avenue booster, it's a gravity-fed only. And so I can only imagine when the neighbors got their sprinklers going, and then some kid hits the button at the spray park, everything goes down, then it comes on, then it goes down, then it comes on. So Sunset did concern when I talked to Bart, because it is on Seventh Street and that area, when the pressure is at high demand, the pump kicks on and keeps a consistent pressure. But that area is on gravity only. So there was a little bit of concern about what it could do to the neighborhood.
So, I guess my question would be, so looking and knowing all that we and you know about all of these sites financially for the town, what site has the best...
I can answer Jeff's question.
What's...
He doesn't want to do it, we're done.
Let's finish the question.
What, what site, what area has the most?
Lions Park.
Is it just, I mean, it appears to be Lions Park, but then I'm hearing all of this about the water lines, and you're just adding and adding and adding. You're killing me here. So is that, is that the direction we're going? Is that it?
So the cheapest utility extension cost, our estimates, was Sunset Park, but not by much. Really Sunset, Rotary, and Second West, sorry, yeah, Second West, are all, most all the same.
Even though Sunset does not have bathrooms?
Well, so, neither does Rotary or Second West.
Right.
So that was all kind of equal.
Counselor Salk.
Careful there. Are you talking Rotary? Are you talking the, the...
The bowl, the bowl next to the...
Provincial building.
Provincial building.
Oh, okay, there, okay. Counselor Brown, you'd be excused.
Your excuse, thank you, Counselor Court.
You want to go to Ben?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Counselor Court? Can you tell the rest of the council what you're doing?
Well, I think it's unique. The baseball team is, um...
Please don't tell them.
They're doing the memorial for our brother and son, Sheldon, that passed through last year.
How amazing, how amazing.
You can tell I'm not even speaking out of it.
Take some pain next week, Jim.
Counselor Self?
Okay.
Cut to the chase.
I just wanna be clear that I still favor the Lions Park as my preferred location just because of the other amenities there. However, there is one thing that we haven't considered. Put it at the soccer park and everything's right there. There's a bathroom, there's space. It hooks up to the other utilities that are right there.
We talked about that.
And there's big area.
Where?
Well, we talked about doing it just right there. So you know our building and then there's the awning and then there's that low lying area before it goes to, before it goes to the town field.
Yeah, southeast.
We would.
Sorry, go ahead.
We would have to map that out, cause we went and looked at that too, once we heard that might be out there.
I agree.
And it's.
Too small.
It might be too small.
It was, it was. We talked about it.
Okay.
Cause it's, it seems perfect to me because you've got the water and you've got central location and the kids are already there.
One place that might work there, just take some cooperation from the school division, if they'd sell the town, the land that's immediately to the west of the soccer park.
Yeah, that's where I was thinking.
They've kinda got an unused chunk that's set to do work, the wood shop and the soccer park.
Junior high, yeah.
And it's kinda sit, they don't use it for much, for any of your lives.
But then they cut the grass.
Piece could be there.
Okay, now that I've thrown that in there, uh, Lions Park is still my preferred location just because it's central and because of all the amenities around it.
Yeah, I think I.
And, and regardless of whether we have to eat the twenty-two thousand dollars or whatever it takes to get water to it, that would still be the preferred location.
Go ahead.
If it helps with that twenty-two thousand dollars, BDI guy just texted me, he said, if you're extending with a research system, he said much smaller, a half to three-quarter inch, three-quarter inch is probably better. So, yeah, sixteen grand or something. So, yeah.
That's what could replace the camp kitchen.
Oh, amen.
One thing, Counsel Brown, one interesting wrinkle is the Second Street West.
You're just full of things.
Well, it's on the chart. And the only reason I kinda find that one a bit interesting, one is a huge park.
Right.
Ton of space there and the campground users can use it. It's just across the street from the campground. So if there's families and kids at the reunion center and people at the campground, it's a kind of a neat amenity in close proximity.
Would it be reasonable to go around the table and ask for
Sure.
your opinion? Let's start with the mayor. Go ahead. Where, where would you see is the best?
I always thought Lions Park was a good location.
Counselor Bengry?
Senator.
I, I liked Lions Park.
Place to camp kitchen.
You know?
I am all in favor of Lions Park. Counselor Self?
Oh, I think I've made my, I think I'm pretty clear where I stand on this one.
Counselor Drew?
Yeah, I think Lions Park is the best place.
And Counselor Barnes?
Okay.
So I feel like we've moved past now. What else did you want?
The money.
On this?
The money, yeah.
The mayor's sounding like Jeff.
Let me tell you where we're at, but we already knew this had to change. Right now, this project is in the capital for twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
We did that prior to the CFIT.
That's right.
But we'll adjust that for twenty twenty. I don't think we'll have a tremendous amount of difficulty doing that. We'll need to have some discussion leading up to that as to how much, because if, if we go with Lions Park, we probably need to find, well, give, give me an idea, Justin. So we know, we have a washroom there and that's fine.
Yep.
But we still gotta build a building for just the mechanical system, the research system. And do you have an idea of that cost? It was in the original quote.
So, so it's gonna be twelve by sixteen feet. Um, and originally, uh, because we didn't, you know, necessarily discuss cinder block and all that stuff, we thought we could build a shed like that for, you know, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars kind of thing. But if it's gonna be extension of the bathroom with cinder block and everything, I can get a quote, you know, from local, local contractor on it and stuff. And, and I'm confident that the Rotary Club can come up with the money. The only thing extra that we didn't present originally is the extension of the infrastructure there. But if it's, if it's at a place with an existing bathroom, in our original budget, we had the spray park with the recirculation system with the shed.
Mm-hmm.
We can come up with all of that. The only extra on the town is extending the services.
So it's about seventeen thousand dollars?
I'm taking a stab at just the pipe cost differential, right? Brandon just said, you know, pipes probably forty percent of the total, but it's only, if you go from three inch to a one inch, you're gonna be, or three-quarter inch, you have it will be in a quarter of the pipe cost.
Okay. So maybe we need to get, uh, administration to kinda look at the detail, to come back with financials a little bit more firmed up.
We also need to have a visit with the Lions Park.
Yes.
Yes.
So you're talking about thirty-eight thousand dollars for your, for your bathroom, roughly?
But we don't know yet.
Twelve by sixteen?
No, no, he has a bathroom there.
That's for the.
That's for the.
We, we had a vote on this last one from Mike Schaefer for a bathroom complex and all that stuff. But if we're going at Lions Park, we can throw that out the window, cause we're not building a bathroom.
Definitely. Okay. Was there anything else that you needed from us?
I feel there's one thing we missed here. Talk location.
Research.
Research, okay, I guess we hit some of those. I'm, I fully agree with you, I mean, with everything that the, the town has done with water conservation and stuff. Um, we're good with that. We're commit, we, we originally had it and we just reworked it because of this whole need to build.
Right.
So we're okay with going back to the research system.
Okay.
We'll raise some money for it, we're.
Yeah, thanks, because that's important to us all.
So I'm just wondering, uh, leaving this meeting, are you going back and punching some numbers and figuring out with the Lions Park, like, and then you'll bring that back to us so that we can kind of?
Yeah, cause what I'll do too is I wanna have Brandon give me an exact number with a one inch line, for example, or three-quarter inch line. Let's get that number. Uh, we have a good sewer line, new sewer line there with good capacity, although we don't need much on a research system. We'll need something, but not much. And so, um, yeah, we'll polish our numbers now.
We'll get like the, the full updated quote from BDI with the research system. And do you want us to get a quote on a building, like just extended on the bathroom, a twelve by sixteen? It can be cinder block, it can be similar, just an extended onto there?
I would think so.
Or probably just put it on the south side.
Yeah.
On the south side. So I can talk to the lo, local contractor and just get a, an estimated figure of that. We'll have all our numbers. I imagine it will be very similar to what we originally presented. It's four hundred seventeen thousand, um, from, from our original a while ago.
Okay, go ahead.
Another thing I'd like to do for some surety for these gentlemen and their club is let's get all the costs on the table now. Let's have a discussion about
Mm-hmm.
the extra cost for utility extension. And then I'd actually like to get a resolution of council to designate the site for the park. And they have some level of surety that they can now put that on the materials.
Right.
The thing is, we can use that to, to go and see people.
Fundraise.
People.
That's right.
Yeah, cause it's still.
Now you've got a spot.
Yeah. But this will take a conversation with the Lions first.
Yeah, we need to get the political ramifications dealt with there too.
Counselor Self?
So for this meeting, Jeff, we can make a recommendation and vote on a recommendation to bring it to council next meeting, or just take care of it in next council's meeting that we're actually designating?
Yeah, just, just leave it with me, cause they got some homework too and I got some homework too. And then I'll get it back on the next, next possible agenda.
Good.
Go ahead.
I should tell you, I have had a conversation with Andy Strang.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I, I asked him about the possibility of relocating that, uh, camp kitchen. Um, he was certainly opposed to it being wiped out completely, just understandably with the emotion and the work and everything that's behind it. But he was surprisingly open to the idea of relocating it.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
That's what I think is a good answer.
Mayor?
I'm just wondering if a location possibly where you have the reunion center, could it be somewhere in that area carry on with the idea of that reunion center? Families cooking, doing things there?
I think one, you gotta, you gotta, one thing is, is that that would be relocated to the Rotary reunion center.
Oh, that would disturb them.
At the Lions Park with.
I get, I get you. I get you.
Maybe, maybe talk to him about taking the camp kitchen out and putting a big plaque on that big rock or something like that, designating that as the original Lions Park site or something like that.
Counselor Drew?
So you don't want us to be with them, right? Or do you want us, whatever you want?
I think administration should do that on our behalf.
Counselor Drew?
So I just need a little bit of clarification. When you say relocate the camp kitchen, are we knocking that down and putting something else up or?
I feel like.
I should put it to the.
I feel like it's too early to say.
I talked to Randy Russell about it. He said it looks like it can be detached from the foundation and moved. He thinks it's quite sturdy and can be, can be moved.
Counselor Barnes?
But I still think that part needs, that, that camp kitchen needs to be within that area somewhere.
I don't.
I, I need to be in Lions Park, don't you think?
Well, if, if you had a plaque or something, designated, representing that.
So are you saying that there will no longer be a camp kitchen in Lions Park?
That's right.
But if we can just, but if we can just take a minute and think about what that camp kitchen is actually used for. So in the twenty years I've been in Kerston, that camp kitchen, what I've seen it used for are change rooms, teenagers hanging out, doing some cool stuff in there, some, as I'm running through, people sleeping in there. So it's very, it's, to me, it's not an honored, things that are going on there isn't what the intent was when it was built, is how I feel.
Doesn't represent the Lions.
Sorry?
Doesn't represent the Lions value.
That's what I feel. I feel like something else could honor them, because we appreciate their hard work. I just feel like what it's being used for right now is kind of a slap in the face to what the forefathers had, had wanted for it. If that turned in, if the soccer park turned into that, I would be destroyed. It would hurt my feelings. Counselor Self?
Hey, I passed around a concept, a picture of.
Yeah.
Basically it's an overhang with picnic tables underneath of it. That could replace that.
Yeah.
And there would be no fires burnt in there or whatever.
Right.
It could replace it. There could possibly be a spot somewhere on that ground where that could go and it's not, it's close to the Splash Park, it's close to the other park and it can still be utilized. That can be
Agreed.
the Lions camp kitchen or call it what you will, but it's really.
Repurposed.
Yeah, it's repurposed. It's, it's used for what it is and that's just, uh, it's got a roof on it and it's got picnic tables underneath of it and families can use it.
It's a lot of places have now.
Justin, you had something you were gonna say.
It needs to be open, fully open.
Yeah, so they're not closed and, yeah.
Agreed. Go ahead.
I just, another thing that came up with my conversation was Andy, was he's not happy with the, the fire pit in there. They've never been able to vent it very.
Yeah.
Into smokes.
Oh, they took it out. We took it out. Okay, yeah, good, okay.
It's venting really well right now.
Okay, good. It's a, it's all gone.
Not a problem, no.
You know, we've talked with that kitchen, one of the things we could do with it is actually do some work on it where you can close it. And then when you rent the park, you get key for it. You use it for your activity, you can go back out. You know, so there's, there's small alternatives.
Yeah, this is what I'm talking about. That's what would look like down in the.
You guys want to fundraise for some shade circle?
Any other questions?
That's what would be more appropriate down there. And it's indestructible.
Right.
Okay, so I think we've come up with the location. You guys are gonna go and do some homework.
Yeah.
And then we'll return back to council, is my understanding, and we'll come up with the game plan. Perfect. Thank you. Was there anything else you wanted to say? I sure appreciate you coming.
Thank you for having us. Sorry, I feel bad that we're causing headaches for everybody, but I think when it's all said and done.
That's what discussion's all about, right?
I think, I think it's gonna be awesome. Like if you, if, they just finished.
Don't sell me on it.
They, they just finished BDI, finished their new project in Waterton, which is a spray park plus.
Yeah, I saw that. It's quite nice.
And we went up there, looked at it. It's very nice. I think it'll just be an amazing place.
It's very pretty.
Awesome.
With some ongoing, you know, they'll, they'll be ongoing, like with the research system, you know, you need water samples and things like that. Um, but I do think it will really enhance.
Awesome. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Self.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
I'll stop Beijing soon. And I'll get the number of stuff.
Sounds good.
Okay, so it's my understanding, we will go to six B, draft policy for land sale. Jeff, I will turn this over to you.
Yeah, this doesn't need to be too long. I just wanted to, um, actually from, from the whole closed session that we had last meeting, we came across a bit of conflicting information into policies that we had. And so Nolan was looking and saying, I'd like to combine our lot purchase and refund policy with the policy for land sale. And so the third document you have in your background with all the yellow highlighting is kind of an amalgamated policy. And Nolan was asking if we could get some of your thoughts on, there's a couple of kind of principal notions in this. The one policy said that when you buy a lot from the town, it's non-transferable.
Right.
And you can't resell it. So that's it. You, you've gotta do something with it or the town's gonna take it back. That's the one side of it. And some of you have been around long enough to know the genesis and the need for that policy.
Yep.
That people were buying a number of town service lots, holding them, market price, create scarcity, market price goes up, reselling them. Okay, so that was. The second theory is, and this was in the one policy, the town does not buy back lots that have been purchased and owners wishing should listen privately and sell accordingly. That we're not gonna get into that game. So we had these two opposing, what do I do if I own a town lot and I don't, I'm not building any more? Or I'm, I'm gonna violate the terms of my development agreements, which we've dealt with a couple of times in this term of council.
Yeah.
That I signed a twelve twenty-four, I now can't meet it. Now what? Am I just stuck with this thing? Or can I sell it to somebody? Or must I try and give it back to the town? And we've contemplated both over the last couple of years. So we were talking about, this is specifically, and we'll have the same discussion on commercial lots. What's your thoughts on, do we wanna allow them to transfer it? Or do we wanna say, no, if you don't meet your obligations, it's coming back to us and we will sell it again? It, it's, it's an intriguing.
No, it's an intriguing story.
Counselor Barnes?
Being a real estate person, I deal with retransfers of land all the time. I don't have a problem with it as long as we have a policy that says, this is not a money grabbing opportunity to inflate the price. You, I don't see that happening when, with resale of lots that, private lots, because there's a price established. But when you get into a situation where there's not very many around and it's in a desired area, then that can happen. I understand that. But I think the town, town needs to have, you can't just go in ahead and buy a property from the town and then all of a sudden turn around and sell it, make fifty or sixty thousand dollars, which has been done recently. I don't like that at all because it, this, this doesn't sit right with me. So I think that as a town, we need to have a policy in place that, yeah, you can transfer it, but you're not gonna sell it for an exorbitant price. I don't mind you catching your costs, like your legal fees, maybe five percent or something like that, but not when it comes to fifty, sixty thousand dollars. I just wasn't happy with that situation.
So here is the issue that we have with that. You buy a piece of land and you flip it back.
Yep.
Just for the purpose of making a profit. But is the price of the land then within what other lots of similar value are being sold at or not? In that case, Jeff?
So if I go back, it was before my time even with the town, cause in my time with the town, the council, with the exception of Scalville, hasn't developed lots.
Right.
So in my time, that's all that the town has developed to sell. But if you go back a few years and you look at Sixth Street West and, um, actually pretty much Sixth is the best example, and there was a couple of others, a seven, eight cul-de-sac.
Seven, yeah.
Um, those lots, the town was selling for seven and eight thousand dollars a lot.
Non-service.
So I bought a lot in seven, eight cul-de-sac for thirteen thousand dollars from the town. I sold it to a guy and he sold it for fifty-five grand to the guy that built his house on it. Now, hey, that's the market. That's good old fashioned, uh,
Yeah, yeah.
free market economy. But those costs were not being fully captured by the town, right? The town could have captured those market costs.
I, well, that's what I'm trying to say.
Cost seven thousand dollars to service those lots.
Right.
There's just no way. That's why Scalville's price war is, because it's basically getting our money back.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's exactly what I'm trying to say. If the lot was reselling at the market value, the person who bought it originally made money.
It's all complicated to touch for. Residential and commercial are almost always sold with a development agreement that, that compels a twelve twenty-four, commence construction within twelve months, complete within twenty-four. So now you come, we've seen this, we've seen these exact examples.
And it's not, it's not really working.
Original homeowner has a twelve twenty-four. Nope, I'm not gonna be able to pull it off. So the penalty is, we take it back minus ten percent. That's, that's the remedy if you can't meet your twelve twenty-four. But we've seen in the last couple of years where that owner says, I gotta sell to a third guy and we can transfer those obligations to him.
Yeah.
A nice tidy profit.
So at a nice tidy profit, as the case was in this one. But even if they were just selling it for what they paid, are we, are we okay transferring? Because I'll tell you, if we ever have to enforce it, it's gonna be a royal hand, but, cause we didn't sell it to that next owner.
Yeah.
Right? So it's a covenant on title, but it's still tricky.
Counselor Bengry?
Jeff, is our twelve twenty-four, twelve twenty-four policy, is that out of line?
It's a toughie.
Does that need to be updated?
That's for you guys to discuss. If you don't have it, then you get people sitting If you don't have it, then you get people sitting and speculating. That, that's what it's...
That's, that's a problem.
Make a comment.
Counsel Barnes, go ahead.
I can see where there's a difference here than the actual real estate market, because the town is dealing with money, taxpayers, and we have a covenant with the taxpayers with this, with this money too, that we're not in the business to give somebody an opportunity to take advantage of the situation and make, uh, you know, a profit that's unnecessary. Where you're in the private market, that's a totally different scenario. So I think maybe I'll change my tune a little bit and say, yeah, the town needs to have a little more control, because we're dealing with the taxpayers' money, and we're responsible to them. So maybe we need to have what you're suggesting, a 1224, or whatever.
Well, that's what you have.
You know, and...
You have that already, but it's not specially working.
And maybe we need to be, you know, we, we give them an extension. We've given two on one. But maybe we need to have that bylaw say, you know, we're dealing with taxpayers' money here, you know. Are you, in reality, gonna be able to move forward and build that project? Or are, or is, or is it, the time's not right at all, and so maybe they should turn it back? We should just have one extension. I don't know.
Counsel, or, Jeff, go ahead.
It's a tough one.
Some of you have been on councils previous or even know the situation. You know why these 1224s and everything are in place.
Yeah.
There's been times in the history of the town, and I'll use Sixth Street West as an example, where the town fully develops them and then wants to get a return on that investment via the taxation of the home on the property. So they're willing to sell it at cost or below cost to turnover taxation. But what happens is they get bought, it drives scarcity, and the price goes up. But the town doesn't realize that increase.
Yeah.
The third party does. And so that's why these things are in place. If you're not ready to pull the trigger on something we can assess in twelve months, we will take it back.
Take it back, yeah.
But we've seen, yeah, so it's just tricky. Or we say, no, we sold it, we're out, and we just make sure we all sell it for the right price. That's the other side.
I appreciate that. But I still, I, I think, we are responsible for those tax dollars. We should control when it's bought and sold again on that, in that situation. It's totally different from, like I said, from the, the private market, because we're corporation looking after taxpayers' money. And so if they don't, if they don't build within that time period, say, well, we'll take it back, and we'll resell it.
Counsel Salk. In essence.
No, actually, I'm conflicted on this one quite a bit, because...
It's a toughie.
Because I sat on those councils when guys were flipping land and at the town's expense. And I think the mayor's made it pretty clear, we're not in the development business anymore for that reason. Yeah. On the other hand, we've gotta take care of the taxpayer's interests in this, so...
Counsel Bengry.
Are our transfer, transfer fees legitimate? Do we need to raise the cost of transferring that fees? It's, what, two hundred dollars now?
Yes, very low.
What if we whacked it up to two thousand dollars?
But even at that, a person who is going to say, that's a valuable piece of land to me, two thousand dollars, is not going to break the deal.
Yeah. Nolan, sorry. What, what we want is, we want that lot to sell, and we want that person to build, so that they'll pay taxes on the assessed value of the house. That's what we want.
That's the outcome.
Right. And so we should protect, if we're, if somebody's buying the lot and they can't start building between that twelve and twenty-four month period, and they wanna sell it to somebody else, we should be able, and maybe we, we do, we should be able to transfer that piece of the 1224 with that sale to the third...
Or just take it back.
Or, well, however that works.
Take it back is the best way to go.
Yeah. Mayor?
I, I would suggest that maybe the transfer to a third party is not the best, because legally, the enforcing of the clause, 1224, is extremely difficult, because that is not the person to whom the land was originally sold to. And the clause goes with the original agreement. Sure is transferred with the transfer, but legally, we do not know where we would stand at this point. Maybe it's worth looking into that element. We need to know, is legally, can we enforce the building within the time period given through the transfer condition without losing a court case?
So, if I can ask, Jeff, what are, what are other communities doing? Like, what is the norm?
It's all over the map, honestly, because you got some communities that are investment, they're development companies.
Right.
Like Noble Ford, for example.
Yeah, Fort McLeod is doing it.
Some that don't touch it. It, it really is all over the map. It is. I could go do some digging of the region.
Yes.
We're, we're gonna find a very varied response.
I mean, Raymond is developing.
Yeah.
So, given the, we have a current piece of property where there was a transfer of the 1224 clause. And to date, we've had nothing happen. Is that correct?
We have two properties.
Actually, I checked into that after our last meeting. There is a building permit issued, but the clock is ticking.
Okay, so something has to be asked.
There is an appropriate building permit, let me put it that way, because we said it has to be a building of certain assessment and size and everything. So there is an appropriate building permit has been taken by the owner.
But nothing's...
We're just nervous about the timeframe.
Okay.
Because the twenty-four is about here.
So on this then, would it be fair to have Jeff bring us back more information on...
The legal aspect.
The legal aspect.
The legal aspect of this?
We need to know that, so...
I'll ask Garmar F. on that.
Yeah.
Counsel Bengry?
I also want to make sure that the town is not in the real estate business. There are, there are trained real estate agents out there, and that's what their job is to do. And that's why this policy was brought in to start with.
But you have that private development policy too, which is enforcing that idea.
Yes.
Counsel Salk?
So Jeff, this highlighted item here, if the conditions of the lot sale policy are not adhered to, the town of cards instead of applying annual penalty of...
So this is the next one I wanted to talk to you about. I'm actually struggling with this a bit. Nolan and I had a lot of discussion on it. It's the very last page. And what it's saying is an option between two things. If the condition isn't met, then we're gonna take back the vacant land, free of all encumbrances minus cost, which is what we would be doing. And Nolan was saying, in some communities, they're saying, our intent was assessment. That was the intent, was taxation. So we'll let you keep it. We're just gonna charge you what we think the taxation on a new home on that parcel is gonna be every year as a penalty.
Ah, clever.
So, yep, keep it, but here's your three thousand dollar a year bill as a penalty, because that's what we would tax the home.
Our tax base increases.
So it's, it's, it's a very financially punitive measure.
But it's, but it fulfilled, well...
It's a motivator clause.
Yeah?
Go ahead, Mayor.
To me, it absolutely fulfilled the objective of why we have the clause.
Exactly.
Which is to build in order to tax. And so in that sense, I would say, I support that clause, absolutely support it.
With the increase of the percentage.
Well, he has a differentiation, so in commercial, for example, he put a five thousand.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we take the one lot we were just talking about with the building permit where the time's coming up, we might say, oh, we don't care. It's just next year, you're getting a tax notice with five thousand dollars.
Well, that's, you know, that will be, that would fulfill...
Yeah.
I think that clause fulfills our aim, which is to collect taxes. Well, we'll collect a fine in lieu of taxes.
I agree.
We want to increase our taxes.
Phil's giving an inquisitive look over Counsel Drew's chair.
Just wondering how that tax implication would happen, because there's no assessment on there. We can't necessarily issue a tax notice, an AR.
It's a penalty related to the lands, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a penalty. It's a penalty in lieu of...
It's the last one.
Just delta a little differently.
So I can investigate what that agreement might look like. I can inquire and see the enforceability and the exact terminology, because Jill's right, we can't call it tax.
No, no, no.
But we can put to taxes costs associated to the lands. You just have to term it right.
Right.
It's a penalty.
Counsel Drew?
Can I just ask? So we had a closed session with someone who needs to extend, or would we be looking at someone like that and saying, okay, if you're not going to be building, then this is what you're gonna be paying?
Yeah.
The penalty that you're...
If you can't meet the 1224...
Well, you pay, you pay the penalty in lieu of...
Yeah, so we're gonna issue a penalty at December thirty-one of five thousand dollars.
And you can continue to own the land.
Yeah, you can do whatever you want.
Until you build it, there's gonna be this penalty.
Yeah, because I think that would stop the speculation.
I, I think you're right.
And that would stop the whole process of waiting, 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 and making us nervous every time we near the twenty-four clause.
Yeah.
Counsel Brown, if I can ask one other thing, because I wanna draft this a bit for an upcoming meeting. Let, let's say, because I think we need to be fair to say, Jeff comes in, buys a lot from the town. I come and buy a Scalville lot from the town, and I enter into a 1224, and something happens in my life where I simply cannot build them. Job changes, health changes, and I, I need to get out from under this lot, but I can't sell it privately. So can I give it back to the town and not incur the penalty we just discussed? If I do it within the 1224, if I do it before twelve months, because I haven't violated the 1224 yet.
Right.
And then we buy it back.
And we buy it back. We buy it back.
Because there are gonna be circumstances that aren't because they made a poor business decision, that life...
Circumstance.
I think, I think that would make sense.
Counsel Bengry?
I'm still thinking. I'm just, I'm just wondering...
You have to hand up, so...
I'm just wondering if we have the, the penalty of what we set for the first year, the second year, we double that penalty? And say, hey, we're serious. We want this being built, or whatever.
Yeah, I guess you have to decide if your intent was to tax the improvement, and you're getting something similar to what the tax on the improvement would have been.
Is that sufficient?
You need to penalize it further. You've, the ends of the net...
You've done it. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, because that three thousand dollars, for the most part, is what the taxes are on most of the average houses anyways.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Counsel Salk.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we have to distinguish between this clause, which is a motivator, and being punitive.
Agreed.
And I think if we're doubling it, then it's just being punitive.
I agree.
It's punitive, yeah.
I think this is good.
Okay. Okay.
I like this.
We'll do a draft and bring it back for you for a little more talk.
All right, moving along. Uh, so we will go to seven A. Is there anything else? Um, I feel like we pretty much handled that. I think we can put that one to bed. Okay? And so let's go to seven B, two thousand nineteen planning session agenda. Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, so this isn't one that we have to have sorted out tonight.
Right.
But I, I'd like to know by the first of July what that agenda looks like, so I can start working on it. So if you, I, I threw a few things out in the background, or that I, I keep a list over the year of things that come up. And of course, recreation infrastructure funding is a major one. You're at the halfway point of your term by this planning session. So I, in my opinion, that's a high priority for us to discuss. But after that, you know, we can usually get in through or form our significant agenda items. Uh, and I'm open to, to anything that you guys see fit.
I really think, if you may, Madam Chairman, if, uh, with the change of government, if we should not be a little bit more aggressive, maybe, regarding the hospital. And starting to even draft letters stating the intent that this council would like to see movement regarding what has been proposed by the former government, which was possibly a, a model for a rural hospital. I'm just knowing that money-wise, there is no money right now. We cannot fool ourselves. There is none. But I think within the next ten years budget, we need to start to see some movement. That hospital will be near seventy-five years old. It's time to think about that. We are starting to have communication with the blood tribe on this item. And I really honestly believe that the time is almost ripe for us to do something politically together as a joint county, town, blood tribe regarding that item.
Okay.
So for this, I'm totally fine if you guys wanna email me stuff over the next couple of weeks. Uh, I don't know if I did it with you guys last year, but I know I did it with the last council. I just made a list.
Yeah.
Send it out on a survey.
You did it last year.
And we prioritized them.
You know, and so by all means, shoot me an email, just tell me after, and we'll, we'll make a list. And I think, Counsel, I know you wanna talk about the, the lot down there. I think it falls under that rec infrastructure spending discussion. I, my opinion is a high priority for this session.
Good.
Yeah.
Moving, sorry, Counsel Salk?
Urban revitalization.
Oh, yeah, right.
Have we talked about this seven C yet?
Well, we're not there, because we're on the...
There yet, okay.
We're getting there.
Okay. All right.
All right, moving right along. We'll go to seven C. Right? So we'll move to seven C. It is the...
It's a toughie.
Mm-hmm, Park Concept. Um, consider a future site. Jeff?
So this is just, this has come up once before. Uh, the high school group came and presented about a monument.
Right.
And I just wanted a little bit of discussion about, do we wanna look at this site for maybe expanding into just a more developed park area to support the monument? And that could be over the next four or five years. It's fine. But I was wondering, so I met with the high school today. I went up to Mrs. Baldwin in the class, and we talked a lot about how to structure the grant funding and how to structure our grant applications and do all that. And the kids are doing some homework for me on developing the story and getting community support and those things. It was great. And we got talking about, you know, we wanna place this where it's gonna fit long-term.
Agreed.
Just setting it on the edge of the asphalt and saying, ta-da. Is it maybe gonna do what the justice it deserves if it comes to fruition? And maybe we have a chance here to expand this notion, and not for a lot of money. I'm not suggesting this is a capital intensive project. But I put some pictures into the healing garden and stayed out. A reasonably simple structure.
That's nice.
Um, but they, you know, I looked at their circular cement and thought, that's where the monument will go. But we wanna place it there now, so we wanna do a design of the site before we do anything on the site. And we need the consultation of an elder, or someone whom can consult on the layout of the site. And I just was, wanted to get a feel, if you as council had any appetite for us to pursue that and to bring back a concept.
Counsel Bengry?
Jeff, when I looked at your concept of that healing park, I really liked it. But then I thought, okay, where's a good location for that? The Rotary Park, right behind the government building.
Well, we've been looking at the Old First Information Center site.
I know, but we could use that. You could utilize that for a day use program for people coming in, stopping, having a picnic, going down Main Street, and whatever. But the Rotary is in that government building, and that government building, I don't think is gonna be torn down at any stage of the game.
Mayor?
We proposed that site, and we also had an elder visit three or four different locations that we had designated. And that elder felt spiritually that the location that is most suitable is by the river. It has great meaning, and it has to face a certain way also.
Counsel Salk?
In addition to the appropriateness of the site from a First Nations point of view, man, we're trying to do everything that we can to get people to slow down on Main Street and pull over. I think if we built that on that location, that's a reason for someone to stop and take a look at the monument and spend some time in the gardens. And you know what, Counselor? You could still put some picnic tables in behind it.
And, and the picnic table could well be in the Rotary area, because it's across the street, literally.
There, there's a lot of space there.
There is something that could be done there.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I would hope it could be used as a stopping point for people coming through town. Absolutely, that would be the...
We want people to pump the tires or pump the brakes and stop there, so...
And there is a good parking lot across the street from that. Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's all good.
I do that to you fairly often, don't I?
I was just going to say, I also feel, I also feel that it's a respect. Like, we're respecting this. It has been chosen, this area. We're honoring that. I liked your idea of this picture you've given us of this garden, because this, to me, looks like a place with honor and respect that you would go and, and have... It's more than just stopping in and taking pictures. It's, you're coming to this garden. It's like the, the gardens in Lethbridge, the... Yeah, the Chinese gardens in Lethbridge.
The Japanese.
Japanese gardens. You go there, it's a respect. You're quiet. You can feel it. I feel like this site, I would feel like this site deserves the same sort of respect, is what I'm thinking. Counsel Bengry?
Can we build the bank up so we don't get that fifteen, fifteen-year flood?
So, so we need to look at all those things?
We talked about that.
I talked to Brandon, and he's, he can work on that. Um, our flood hazard mapping will be done this winter as well. So we'll have really good data on that. The timeline for this, just so you know, for the monument itself, not the rest of the park, the park, but these kids would love to have the monument in place and the front raised monument by native honor night next year.
Wow.
So that's the goal because they would love to do a ceremony there and then march to the high school front.
Cool.
These kids have a vision of it, right?
Very cool.
It's their baby and we've been very careful not to.
Absolutely.
Take it. This is their thing and, and great kids and they've got a vision and they're just astounded that all of a sudden the town and the school division people, these grown-ups are coming and saying, let's do this.
How can we help you? Right.
So it's been great. And I had a good visit with them today and I'll continue to do that. So I think I have a bit of a feel that we can do some design. We'll meet with Mrs. Heavyrunner and was it Daley or Crawford Wolf?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll see if we can have a meeting when we have a design to look at suitability of the design and appropriateness of the design. And if we can model after St. Albert's Gardens, I'm going to make an assumption, although it may be wrong, that that was a appropriate design for a First Nation honoring garden.
Right.
You're going to do that with consultation with them?
Yeah, absolutely. We've already, Caravalla's been excellent about getting some elders to consult through the whole process. So Mrs. Heavyrunner Harriet has been working on the interpretation of the kids' poems for the monument to make sure that that's right, a number of those types of things.
Awesome.
Counselor Ben-Gree.
One thing, Jeff, if they want this done for May of next year, I don't want to see a 24-hour pad being poured with jagged edges and everything else. Could we have that pad in place if we go with that structure also?
I think the most important, their only expecta, I shouldn't even say expectation, their wish is that the monument is there. And the rest of this is like icing on the cake, however it develops. So yes, we would want it placed so that that's its permanent location.
Right.
Irrespective of what we put around it later.
Right.
But all done appropriately.
Of course.
So the grass is growing and.
Yeah, no question. All done appropriately.
Okay. So are there any other questions?
That's all I needed on that.
All right, so let's go to 7D, business arising from the delegations.
We've taken the first one and then the second one.
I think we.
I think we handled it.
I feel like we did as well.
We did a pretty good job of that.
We can't do anything until the review comes.
So seven, or sorry, eight questions, Counselor Salk.
Just one.
Go ahead.
I texted Bart, by the way, and he got back to me.
Did he?
So, yeah.
Okay, because I, I don't want to go to a meet, my meeting on Thursday with nothing.
I should have kept a voicemail so I could just play it over.
Okay, would you please ask a question?
Bart, the question is, because I know this has been an issue, the fire department is looking to move one of the dumpsters down in the central area between them and the Schaefer Plumbing Building to share. Bart went and met with Ryland and Brandon. They are putting fencing around the entire perimeter of the property. And so Bart says, we're going to try and refurb, we bought some refurbished bins and we'll just get the fire department a refurbished bin because the other one's going to be located inside the compound.
Right.
Of Schaefer Plumbing. That was his answer back to me when I texted him tonight.
Perfect. When?
Well, when Dylan can get some, he's, he's getting parts and working on them now. We bought some out of the Crowsness Pass last year, I think it was, or somewhere in there.
So we were, we were going to refurbish them.
And then Dylan refurbs them, he welds them up again and puts new fittings and does some work. So we have inventory.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I saw him sitting in the compound a couple weeks ago. I go, Bart, there is inventory.
Anything else on that?
Response on that.
Okay, let's go to nine, 9A, Cardston County letter.
Two and a half.
There's three of them there.
We're going to start with the first one.
Could I?
Mayor, go ahead.
Say something. The two first letters address county letters in support of the water study and on the sewer study. The third one is a little bit more ambiguous in a sense that it had to address the county interest in joining us with a different celebration that we have in town and financially support those, which never has been done in the past. But the letter tells us very simply that at this point, they're not prepared to make a decision and that it will have to be in the whole frame of the ICF. But that they're willing to help us with individual item as they come along. So.
I think my favorite part of that letter is where it says, the Cardston Council as a whole discussed the matter and have determined that we are not in a position at this point in time to make a blanket commitment. They said, we will, however, endeavor to assist the town and various community organizations as we have in the past. So my question after reading this was, in the past, have they donated anything to the Cardston Days or anything?
So I think the reference there, if I might, is that they do have quite a list of community initiative donations, they do participate in groups.
I'm aware of the agridome. They changed out our, they changed out the dirt, they moved the bleachers for the mud bog, that kind of stuff. They've been really good about helping with.
There are some financial donations. We've seen the list.
So I give about, I have about $120,000 in donation a year. We have near $100,000 in various type of donation that are not regulated under our donation policy, but it's still something about there. So on a whole, we're pretty close, but we were trying to see if there was an appetite to help us with Cardston Days, with power, with.
And I guess we got our answer.
1st of July, the fireworks, et cetera. So at this point, we carry on as usual.
Okay, so let's go to 9B. So this letter is from the Alberta Recreational and Parks Association.
So.
Sorry.
Mayor.
I have a question on this one. Did we ever send anybody from the Parks and Recs to this conference?
I think they attend.
Which one do they attend?
There's two of them. Yeah, they, they attend the Recreation Facility Personnel Conference. That's right. Thank you.
I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, is this one something that the counselor involved in Parks and Rec should attend to try to get information?
Hmm?